Good evening, everyone. It is five oh one P M. This is the regular board meeting for October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five of the Pickerton Local School District. Mister Walsh is not here today, so Ms. Olsheski is going to be running the meeting.
That is scary.
Um, so with that, uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Mister Lopez.
Here.
Mister Postage.
Here.
Mister Henson.
Here.
Mrs. Neekamp. And myself, I am here.
Can everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a brief moment of silence?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, do we have approval of the agenda? Motion in a second, please.
Subdued. Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Olsheski, can you call the roll, please?
Uh, Mister Henson?
Yes.
Mister Postage?
Yes.
Mister Lopez?
Yes.
And myself. Okay. Now I don't know what to hit. I really don't know what to hit. Open up. Okay, save. Oh, save.
Good. Okay, next we have our recognition of visitors and public participation. Um, we do have several people signed up tonight, so I would ask that everyone abide by our three-minute timeframe. Um, and I would just remind everyone that board meetings are not appropriate forums for discussing individual personnel matters. So I would ask that you please refrain from mentioning or commenting on any specific employees, students, or community members by name. If there are concerns that need to be addressed, they should be handled through the proper administrative channels. And I'm just going to take these in order how I receive them. I received several through email and then also everyone that signed up here today. Um, so the first person is Terry Waters.
Hello. Hello. I'm here to represent the Pickerton Central Tiger volleyball families who are standing in support of the coaching staff, specifically Coach Jeannie Kruger and Coach Tabitha Furlong. It is important to us that we share how the majority of the athletes and parents feel. Uh, the following is a letter with addendums, um, that I recently, recently submitted to our A D and superintendent after learning Coach Furlong's leadership was in question. I am writing this letter in support of Coach Tabitha Furlong, whose impact on my daughter and so many young athletes has been truly remarkable. Coach Furlong has gone above and beyond for the central volleyball program, and the fruit of her labor has yielded not only strong, talented, and confident players, but a winning program with a true family culture. My daughter has been able to play for Coach Furlong for the past three years and was a student of hers at Ridgeview for one. My daughter was homeschooled up to seventh grade. The opportunities offered by the volleyball program in the summer prior to the start of her first year in the district allowed my daughter's transition into public school to be much smoother than anticipated. The culture and opportunities created and steered by Coach Furlong that summer, uh, played a vital part in helping her cultivate friendships and identifying an adult she could trust, Coach Furlong. I fully support Coach Furlong and the entire coaching staff. They hold athletes accountable, teach valuable left life lessons that extend far beyond volleyball and genuinely care about each player's development, both on and off the court. Their expectations for athletes and parents are expressed to parents during the meet the teams meeting at the beginning of each season. They make it clear they're developing our athletes for possible collegiate careers and instilling the importance of being a student athlete. Yes, this includes regular grade checks and consequences for the players who may forget that they are students first, then athletes. This steering helps to develop the kind of young people this, this school district aims to produce. I believe the coaches' intentions and actions have always been centered on what's best for the athletes and the entire program. While this coaching style may be seen as firm for some, I have great appreciation for every ounce of it. As an educator myself, parent, and former athlete, I know it comes from a place of genuine care and a desire to see players reach their full potential. The majority of the volleyball parents and athletes would say, like most parents and athletes, that the program requires a lot of our time, energy, and money. Our season is always, as I describe it, fast and furious. We are often exhausted after a jam-packed week of games, practices, and activities. However, at the end of the season, we see it as worth it. Our girls have made memories and lifetime bonds with each other year after year, um, and are able to be a part of a successful program, one that has made history with our current coaching staff. I'll end with this by saying, is there room for improvement, change to be made, and conversations to be had? Absolutely. However, there have been no incidents that warrant a complete shakeup in the coaching staff of this program. Dismissal of any of the coaches would cause a disruption that I don't believe our athletic department truly desires or is currently fit to address. The future of central volleyball, and quite frankly, our daughters' athletic futures, would be at risk, at great risk, if Coach Kruger or Coach Furlong are not here next season. We parents, like the coaches, want what is best for our players. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next individual I have is, uh, I hope I'm saying this right, Tashina Green.
Good evening, board. Hi, my name is Tashina Green. I'm here to read a statement on behalf of my husband, Coach Darren Green, who is not only an award-winning coach, um, but a district employee, as well as, um, he's currently away on military orders, so he will not be able to attend this meeting, of course. Um, for the past six years, I've proudly served, so these are his words, by the way, um, I proudly served as the district head track coach at Pickerton Central High School. My time here has been some of the most rewarding in my coaching career. With the support of Coach Roach and our incredible staff, we've led both the boys' and girls' programs to one team state title, two-team state runner-up finishes, and produced multiple individual state champions. My staff and I are dedicated to this program, the community, and creating the best experience for the kids at Pickerton Central. Unfortunately, over the past three years, we have faced increasing, increasing challenges under the current leadership. I've always had excellent working relationships with former athletic directors in Bo Hanson and Eric Music. However, things have changed. Because of the timelines, I'll highlight just a few examples. Um, there's been a disregard of administrative line of command and student safety concerns. My input has been immediately, repeatedly disregarded, um, disregarded about meet scheduling and cancellations, raising concerns about student safety. I've written documentation that supports this, along with them stating, stating they are not concerned with parents. They have tried to hire and assign assistant coaches, um, attempted to set pay and dictate duties without consulting me. When I raised concerns, she initially dismissed them, only after meeting with Principal Parker and myself was an adjustment made, but the pattern continues. The handbook states the head coach assists in scheduling and adheres to assigned facility times. However, our weight room schedule was cut to, from two days to one due to, um, football that was in offseason and we were in season. When questioned, we were told football invested ten thousand dollars into the weight room, and that will not be changed. The past season, our practice day was moved over the weekend with no notice. In turn, we had to send over a hundred kids home after being dropped off. This directly undermines fair access to facilities for all student athletes. Multiple requests have been made to meet, and they have gone unanswered, while outside coaching candidates have been confirmed and parents have met with her quickly. Meetings with outside prospects have been scheduled, but she won't respond to current athletic coaches. Most concerning, I've been here fifty, I've been here six years. I've coached for fifteen. And my staff and I told, we were must, we must reapply for our own coaching positions. We're currently being held from performing our current duties, which actually would have been, begun in October. Meeting with outside candidates again have been scheduled, while our interviews have not. When made aware of my concerns, we have always made necessary adjustments. We only ask for fairness, transparency, and communication consistent with the district handbook. No parents or administrators have raised concerns about our programs or operations. As a coach, a father of two, um, upcoming Pickerton student athletes, and a member of this community, I deeply care about this program. I respectfully ask the board to review these matters and help ensure that this can be resolved professionally without retaliation. Thank you for your time and listening with fairness, understanding, and kindness for our student athletes.
Thank you. Um, the next individual I have is Jennifer Green.
Good evening. I am also a track coach at Pickerton Central, and I-
Can you pull your mic up?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm also a track coach at Pickerton Central, and I wanted to speak on behalf of the team and my brother, Coach Darren Green. I am here representing the coaching staff as well as our athletes. We have been subjected, unfortunately, to unprofessional and unfair practices, we feel, from our athletic department. My sister-in-law, Tashina Green, just spoke on the fact that we are now being subject to reapplying for positions and not given in any idea when those interviews are going to take place. Um, we are trying to adhere to what we feel is the standard, but we are being, not being told or given any information on what that standard actually is. We've never had to reapply. Now, that's not an issue, because we can get those things done as long as we know what the actual rules are that govern the reapplication process. We have been subjected, as the coaching staff, to a reorganization of our track meets, reorganizations of our practices, without any type of notice, of our staff, as well as the, the athletes and their parents. We are not getting any type of communication from our athletic department, and by that I mean this. Bus schedules, when they're coming, when they drop off students, when they pick students up. Again, with the reorganization of our track meets with no input from ourselves, as well as our practices. When we share our facilities with the other athletics that are going on in the school, we're in there as the track team, so of course we would have to utilize the track. But we're in there at the same time, the baseball team is in there throwing the balls all over the place, or the basketball team is in there and they're throwing balls all over the place. And so there's no care for the safety of our athletes. We feel as though the athletic department does not hear any of our concerns, and therefore they're shutting us out and keeping us from being able to do our jobs effectively. All that we're asking is that somebody step in and give us some support and some help. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next individual I have is Janelle Wimbley.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I wasn't sure if I was going to speak today, and I definitely cannot follow Ms. Waters' speech of what she gave today. And I, um, support everything that she stated. My daughter is a member of the volleyball team. She is also, hopefully, will be a member of the track team. Right. We came into this district, uh, like Ms. Waters. My daughter went to private school up until we came to the seventh grade, and she was embraced by the volleyball program. What she learned from Coach Kruger and from Coach Furlong and how she was embraced by them, I couldn't have asked for anything more as a parent, who was definitely scared for her to go from an academic, uh, career that she had outside of Pickerton, coming into a community that she knew nothing about. Uh, so to hear that one, a few squeaky wheels, which may have valid concerns, uh, could ruin a whole program, is very concerning for me. So today I'm just here to show my support for the program, to say, if you really want to know, talk to the parents on the ground. Talk to, talk to the athletes if parents give permission. So you can see how our girls are being effective, how they are being cultivated to be good students, to be great leaders, and just to have a, just a true impact on this community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next individual I have is, uh, Jermaine Archie.
Hello, everyone. I'm here, um, on behalf of appreciation for our track coaches. Dear school, dear school board members, I'm writing this as a parent of three wonderful teens on the track team to share how much our coaches mean to my family. Coach Darren Green has been such a positive influence, especially for my daughter, Jordan. Pickerton Central Class of twenty twenty-three, his guidance, encouragement, and belief in, in her helped her earn a full ride scholarship to Northern Kentucky University. That's the kind of impact he has on all his athletes. He has helped them to see and reach their potential. Coach White and Coach Green and Coach, um, Coach Rob are just as amazing. The three of them work together so well and bring out the best in every student. When our family went through a major life hardship, these coaches showed up for us without hesitation. Their support, kindness, and genuine, genuine care went far beyond track. This program is special because, because of them. I've built something that feels like family, where the kids feel seen, supported, and pushed to their very best. If there were to be any changes to the coaching leadership, I truly believe the heart of the team would be lost. Thank you for taking the time to hear from a parent who's seen firsthand how much these coaches matter. Sincerely, the Archie family, parents of Jordan, Aubrey, and Marcus Archie, regarding Pickerton Central Track and Field. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next individual I have, I believe, is Dana Rutherford.
I am here in regards to the Lady Tiger volleyball coaches. Uh, this staff has a demanding presence and ultimate goals of shaping these ladies into strong, courageous, fearless women. They set boundaries with consequences and expectations for all involved. Parents and athletes are held accountable, and to me, if more programs in our school district need to do the same. You don't hear about our girls fighting, or failing drug tests, or being suspended from games, or anything else. Our girls have goals of beating each other in the weight room. They work hard because they have a leadership that believes in them. They might be considered a few derogatory words or anything else, but those women have the best intentions for our girls. Our program might do a lot, but ultimately, we're trying to become a family, a family that wins championships. And my daughter is a freshman player, and she wrote a little something. She's just embarrassed to come up. She says, hi, my name is Madison Rutherford. The coaches have their bad days, but they have more good days than bad. When one of our players had her brother run away, they were there for her. Not just one coach, but every single one of them would check up on her and make sure she was okay, or if there were any updates. They allowed her to skip practice and lifting, but she didn't. She didn't skip practice because she wanted to be with her team. For the people who were there for her, yes, we might do a lot, but they do, but they do it to help us. When we have to wake up early to go to lifting or to go to breakfast, we might not want to do it that morning or that day, but when it is over, we are glad we did it. It helps us in the long run. Yes, we all have days where we want to do nothing and just sit in our bed and just sleep, but we can't. We can't do that. As a freshman playing both J B A and varsity, I do get tired from doing both teams, but when it came to an end, I'm glad they had me do both, as it has helped me so much with my social life and my athletic self. I was put in uncomfortable situations, but the coaches helped me get past them, like having to play with the upperclassmen. I don't know if you know this, but being a freshman playing with juniors and seniors, it's scary, because all you can think about is what they are going to think if I mess up. Will they not like me? Will they want to disinclude me? But after the first week, I didn't feel like that anymore. Instead, I felt like I was a part of a family, a family that isn't blood. Yes, we did have to run for drop balls and unfor, and unforced errors, and yes, they made me not want to come to practice and to quit right there. But then I realized it made me actually go after balls and dive. And coming from a middle during club season, you should know I do not dive. Yes, some days I wanted to quit because of how hard it is and how I'm tired and I'm not, I wasn't in love with the sport. But when I get to go have fun with my team, it makes me fall back in love with my team. And when we win a game, or when we do our chanting in the locker room, or when we blast the music on the bus, that's when I remember I am in love with the sport, because I can do it with my best friends. And as far as the grades for running, if we have a missing assignment, it helps us to get our grades in on time. And right now, I have a few missing assignments because, because season is over and they're not on my back. But I liked that they were, because it helped me. I've made really good bonds with my team and really good friendships with the coaches and players. I, I know if I ever needed anything, I could go to them, whether it was with school or friend trouble. I knew I could go to them. I knew when I didn't feel like I had anybody, I had them. Even our lifting coaches, I made a bond with them also.
Thank you. And thank you. And get, get your missing assignments in. We'll, we'll stay on you from up here. The, uh, next individual is Ian Als.
Hello, everyone. Move the mic down. Um, my name is Ian. I pronounce it Ian, so it's okay. I get that all the time.
I was going back and forth, and I went with Ian, so I apologize.
Uh, I'm here on behalf of the, uh, the girls' Pickerton, uh, track team, my wife, uh, Janelle. We have a daughter named Grace Als, and, um, I would say everything starts with leadership. You know, if, if there's an old saying, if it's not broke, don't fix it. I can't, I can't say anything bad about Coach Darren Green, Coach Rob, or Coach White. Uh, my daughter's goal, her, she's at Kent State now, was to, was to, was to win the open for four hundred, which if anyone knows track, you know, to, to run a full sprint around a track one time, to me, is insane. I tried it, didn't, didn't make it. So her goal, the night before, the two nights before the state, uh, state final championship, the, the four-by-one, the four-by-two, uh, even with her, you know, they, they didn't do well, but they qualified to go to the final round. Okay? So on the day of the final round, uh, the girls won the, uh, four-by-one, they won the four-by-two handily, wasn't even close. And my daughter beat one of the best girls that run the quarter goes to Hilliard, um, beat her, won the open four hundred. And I know that was, that was a goal of hers, and it helped the coaches help her to obtain that goal. Uh, I don't see why anybody would make a change in a, in a, in a, in a coaching staff after they won three state championships. This sounds like Jerry Jones to me. If you know anything about the Cowboys, you know, they have been to the Super Bowl in almost, in almost thirty years. So if it's not broke, don't fix it. I can't say anything bad about, uh, Coach Darren Green, his coaching staff, his sisters here. They all helped Grace to be, become the young lady that she is, and there's other young ladies who are rising up here. And a couple of those girls that won the state, they're sophomores. So they got a couple more years left here with, with Pick Central, and I think they will, if there's a coaching change, I hate to see these young ladies go to Pick North. I would hate to see it, and then they have to face Pick Central. I would hate to see it, and then they have to face Pick Central, you know, a couple of times out of the year. So I just want to take this time to say thank you. I think, you know, if you have a good, if you have a good leadership, don't change it, don't change it. That's, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. The next individual is... Jonathan Green?
Did we get it wrong?
Or is it, is it Jeanette, maybe?
Jennifer?
Oh, okay, we got you twice. Do you want to come up again? Are you good?
Do you want to come up as Jonathan?
Yeah. I apologize. Okay, then finally, we have Janelle Alls.
My husband just spoke, so I'm gonna do what he said.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Okay, thank you, everyone. We appreciate you all coming out and for your time. With that, we are going to go to our presentation, and Dr. Smilik, I'm gonna turn that over to you.
Thank you. Actually, we're gonna start with Dr. Gillison. Just want to give a little bit of preview about what these presentations are. We asked, or I asked each of the senior leadership team members to have a...
So, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. So, we're not, we appreciate everybody coming out. We're not gonna make any action or any statements on anything that was commented tonight. You're more than welcome to stay. We love having faces here in the audience. However, if, if you want to sneak out the door, you're more than welcome to do so. But, but we, we, we do appreciate everyone being here, for sure. Yes.
Good.
And with that, you're, you're back on.
Okay, so just a little bit of a preview. Each senior leadership team member developed two goals. One is directly in line with their responsibilities, but something they would put a little bit more focus into, reflecting a, a need in some type of data in the district, or some type of practice in the district. And then the second is really a stretch goal, something that we really want to look at as sort of a vision piece of, of really expanding upon, or really dramatically improving a program that we currently offer. So that's what you're gonna see this evening. Again, importantly, it does not mean that these are the only foci of our leaders. These are specifically areas in which they will dedicate additional focus to try to make sure that they can move the needle in terms of, of what type of improvement we want to see. So Dr. Gillison will, will start, and then we'll work through our other members, and then I will conclude.
All right, good evening. President Lopez, board members, and Dr. Smilik. Tonight, I'm pleased to share my goals for the 25, 26 school year and beyond. Please keep in mind that each one of these goals is designed to align the work of academic service team with our district's four strategic priorities. The first of those priorities is academic excellence. Understanding that academic excellence is not a static priority. It is a dynamic commitment to each of our families and our students. Academic excellence is our continuous improvement goal. It centers on clarity, coherence, and consistency, ensuring that every member of our academic service team is working in unison to strengthen instructional leadership and accelerate learning for all of our students. My goal. My goal is to ensure the academic service team is aligned and working collaboratively to deliver a connected, coherent approach to meeting one year, to meeting our year one goals in the District One Plan. Our District One Plan is our district's continuous improvement plan. Data point that we want to look at, by June 2028, our early literacy score will increase an average of three percentage points per year, moving us from 66.4% to 75.5%. Let me put it another way. Moving us from two stars to very close to four stars. And that is measured by the early literacy component of the Ohio State test. Now, there are certain action steps and really intentional action steps that we're taking to meet this goal. Establishing clear and consistent instructional leadership, and that is through our professional development with our building leaders, not only our building principals. Heather and I launched an Assistant Principal Professional Development Series so that they can support their principals from the second chair in moving the needle. Enhancing the instructional leadership of all that's in the building is going to help us move in the right direction. Goal two, which was my stretch goal, when I met with Dr. Smilik, we talked about goals, and then he said, "I need you to stretch," and what would that stretch goal be? So my stretch goal is focused on family and community engagement. We do a, a plethora of engagement events here in Pickerington local school districts. But by the fall of 2026, I'm going to have already started working on a family engagement council. It will be fully operational, serving as a representative body of diversity in our parents, caregiver staff, and we even have community members. So our action steps include, but are not limited to, providing structured feedback on district initiatives, programs, and policies. The Family Education, Family Engagement Council will identify and address barriers to family engagement through actionable recommendations that will go to our senior leadership team, and then hopefully end up in front of the board. Co-create strategies and activities that build strong home, school, and community partnership. And lastly, the Family Education, uh, Family Engagement Council will serve as ambassadors in two-way communications between families and the district, kind of getting the words out. How will I know that we are successful? Well, we will host at least four of the Family Engagement Council meetings per year with 80% member attendance. And from the council, there will be a minimum of three district initiatives or policies receiving formal feedback from our Family Engagement Council, and documentation of at least two new or enhanced engagement strategies we're going to co-create with our families. Those are a few of the action steps, and at this time...
Do we, do we want to do questions or comments from the board after each one? That way, we don't have to... Any questions or comments for Dr. Gillison?
I was gonna just ask, how many people are you visioning or foreseeing being a part of this?
On the Family Engagement Council, we have 13.
13.
And of that 13, we have staff members, we have family members, and we also have community members.
Perfect.
And two students. So we even, we've captured student voice as well. All right.
Thank you. Nope, sorry.
I laud this stretch goal for you. I laud this stretch goal for all of us. It's my overly inflated two cents that the concept of engagement, gonna wax poetically here a little bit, in this country is off. And in the school world, and please hear me, this is not a criticism at all, we are facing a societal norm, which isn't normal anymore, which is we have people and adults in the room, you know, one of my favorite phrases, who are not being the adults in the room when it comes to their children. And again, I laud you and us for tackling this monster. But I think we need to embrace the reality that we are going to be bumping up against a norm that is not fair to our children, which is what we do. And whether it's a U stretch goal, or a district stretch goal, or a building stretch goal, or a classroom instructor stretch goal, getting the adults in the room, the parents, the caregivers, the grandparents, the whomevers, to engage in the life of their children in an academic world, it's almost embarrassing that we have to tell the adults in the room to do this. Now, that being said, play the hand you're dealt, another favorite phrase of mine, and kudos to you for tackling this. It is a sad commentary on society that we have to encourage the adults in the room to engage in the child's life. But we do. So let's be a part of the solution, a part of the encouragement, a part of the team, because everybody will win the more that we are engaged in the life of our children and our students. So you've tackled a monster, Alicia, I give you a ton of credit, but this community has got to step up. And I'm hoping that we will encourage, you know, push it down to the building levels, because as we get bigger, we need to grow smaller, and rose to circles in churches, blah, blah, blah. But we, we need to remind the adults in the room that engaging in the life of their children is always a good idea, and so hats off.
Thank you, and point taken. The last meeting we had, which was our first Family Engagement Council meeting, they actually identified barriers that I would like to share, not at this point, but they identified barriers that keep them from, and keep other parents from engaging. And so our next session is November 3rd, and we're gonna sit down, look at those barriers and themes, and see how we can work from that to remove those barriers. So to your, your point is taken. And at this time right now, I will call up my colleague.
Thank you, Dr. Gillison.
Heather Hetchpath.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Hetchpath, Chief Administrative Officer. So I get the pleasure of working with our information management team, as well as our attendance, Welcome Center, and our HR personnel. And as you know, three of them are brand new to our department, so we get to reshape some areas that we are looking forward to reshaping and refining under my leadership, but I am confident we will accomplish my goals as well. So my goals are focused on operating efficiency. And by July 26, 2026, I will establish a comprehensive vision for our HR department that strengthens key areas of talent, culture, compliance, and professional growth. Now, how am I going to get there? I have a great team, and with that great team, we will be working to align their goals with mine as well. So we've started this, this past summer, but identifying common themes leading to the departure using exit interview data. We've come into some situations where people are leaving, staff are leaving, but we are not gathering why they're leaving. People can make assumptions as to why they're leaving, but to have that trend data would be very helpful to guide some areas of improvement if we are able to. We want to standardize the hiring process. We started this work last year, but it was not where we wanted it to be, and we received some feedback from our administrators that we needed to refine that as far as the interview process, the hiring process. So we are currently working on that, so that we can communicate that with our administrators, and then we will collaborate with them to ensure we're all on the same page. We've also scheduled semester visits with our HR team, along with myself, to do check-ins with building administrators, because what we were finding is, we would get to the end of the school year, they had concerns that were not communicated with us, as we, we could have been proactive in helping problem solve some things. So we've scheduled those for the first semester, and we will be doing it second semester as well. We also want to educate administrators on employment laws and board-approved policies, which we've already started doing. As, as we approve board policies, we are sharing those and communicating them with administrators. We're finding that we are aware of board policies, but they are very, very helpful in our daily decision-making. Also, we will collaborate with academic services focused on special education to develop a 26, 27 Special Education Staffing Plan based upon trend and projected data. We had a conversation today in senior leadership about, we have three student teachers who are intervention specialists or will become. How can we target them to see if they're interest, interested in working for us? And get them, hopefully, if they're, if they're willing, and if that's what we want, or who we want, because we know that special education continues to be an area of recruitment for us that we need to improve on. How will I know that I have met these, this particular goal? By developing a vision statement, by creating a Special Education Staffing Plan with academic services focused with special education. Coming up with, developing exit interview data, looking at the themes of why people are exiting out of our school district and either seeking other employment or leaving the profession. The hiring process plan, professional development plan for administrators, which one of those includes working with Dr. Gillison on assisting with the assistant principals, but also educating them on board policies and employment laws, and then quarterly meeting agendas with administrators. Now, my stretch goal, again, as Dr. Gillison said, will grow me even more professionally by increasing my networking with external stakeholders. Think I'd do a pretty good job of internally working with stakeholders, but this is going to push me to collaborate even more with other school districts. So how am I going to do that? I will identify best practices from comparable local school districts, including peer districts, related to employment practices, policy development, and implementation. So I'm reaching out to other school districts and networking with them. And how will I know that I have met the networking with external stakeholders? I've already started this process, but I've become a, a member of the BASSA Women's Committee Planning, which is the Buckeye Association for School Leaders. Also engage in second command networking opportunities with Upper Arlington, Gehanna, Worthington, Southwestern City, and New Albany. And I was invited for, for that purpose to begin networking with them. I've already reached out to them today about their, some of their structures in others, in different departments, as well as policies, such as the cell phone policy that we are trying to tackle. I will attend a BASSA regional meeting, and also participate in BASSA-sponsored book study, which is something that Dr. Smilik has already had us read the book, but now we've been invited to participate in that book study, and also present at the BASSA Women's Conference. So through that, I will increase my networking with external stakeholders.
I, I, I just want to add two, two comments. First, I, I love how often you're, you're getting out into the schools. I noticed that in your goals, we've talked about that, but... I noticed that in your goals, we've talked about that, but it's a real strength. And second, really for the board, I appreciate Dr. Hetchpeth's willingness to engage in these external activities because it is not something I naturally really enjoy. And yet, it really is invaluable because through that you network and you learn trends and you learn potential openings where, you know, we can maybe attract somebody to come into our district that, you know, some type of talent that we didn't have. So I really appreciate that she's, she's willing to engage in this because it's, it's just, it's not a strength of mine, and I'm glad that you're able to, to compliment what I, what I don't have.
It will be a stretch goal for me as well, but I, I'm ready to tackle it.
So questions or comments from the board?
Thank you.
Now I will turn it over to Mr. Rob Weinheimer.
Well, good evening, board. Those are some big shoes to follow. I will try and be as articulate and elaborate as my colleagues here, but I am your operating officer, chief operating officer over the business office, which comprises of a lot of departments. The largest by budget line item for the general fund is transportation. And we all know how polarizing transportation can be for many different reasons. So this normal goal, if you will, that's in front of us is a development from last school year roughly around September. It came to me to start measuring K6 afternoon performance. And why? Well, that is our most critical time of the day. We don't have a layover. We have 20 minutes, 28 minutes to get from middle school to elementary. K6 tends to be our highest ridership. And then, as we saw earlier, how important athletics is to our district. We have athletic trips dispatching between 3:00 and 4:30 when K6 kiddos are dismissing. So it is a pressure cooker. So working with transportation, Peterman and Greg Strauss, who's the district transportation supervisor, we have created an on-time performance K6 tracker all last year. We tweaked it, we've developed it, and moving into this year, we're going to add two. And that's going to add achievable on-time performance metrics for our bus department to achieve. And this is going to be an incremental progressive scale. So we're starting at 85%. What does that mean? That means we have 120 unique opportunities either to succeed or fail in the afternoon. That means runs, you know, routes are made up of runs, and I don't want to get too deep in the weeds, but out of 120 opportunities, we can have roughly 15, 16, 17 be beyond eight minutes and still hit 85%. I know that sounds like a lot, and I don't like it either. That's why we're going to make it incremental, and we're going to push it into the 90s as we go along. So after two months of successfully hitting 85%, we will up the ante to maybe 87, 88%, depending on how we do. And that's the high level. So how are we going to get there? We're going to develop a routing playbook. So give you a little history lesson. COVID shook things up a lot. It's really changed the industry across the state, probably the country for CDL drivers in general. So we've had to adjust and really look at our routing model. So I'm going to throw an example out there. Leaving Central High School, we have high school routes going all the way to the west side of Heinz Road. They leave at 3:02. Bell time's 2:55. We give them seven minutes to load. Wheels start turning at 3:02. We expect that bus driver to go all the way to the west side of Heinz to get over to, let's say, Harmon or Diley or Tollgate Middle by 3:30, yeah, 3:30 for a dismissal of 3:37. That's unattainable. That driver cannot simply do it. So we have to create rules. Those drivers don't have a middle school, and thankfully, that's the least demanding run of the day is middle school has the least amount of kids, so it has the least amount of runs. So we're going to develop a playbook that creates doable, you know, metrics or doable rules where we're not going to send a bus over there and set them up for failure. So we're creating a playbook. We're also going to say kids don't get picked up before 6:30 in the morning, and they don't get scheduled to be dropped off past 4:45. So if we can create that guardrail of the AM and PM, then we can build out how many routes we actually need. We have a transient or growing or both district in particular in our special ed routes. So if kids come in, they're door to door, they basically can, you know, based on their program, it could be, you know, across the district from the Sycamore area, maybe they're going to Tollgate. That's a, that's a long run for a bus. So we have to reevaluate our special ed routes every so often and add them. Just to put a number to it, it's rounded up roughly $90,000 per route. So we have to be cost conscious and good stewards of the dollar while we make these adjustments. So it may appear that they're running late, but it's because we're growing, and it's because we want to be conscious that this is a long-term solution by adding a route and not a short term, and then we're kind of stuck. So that's why things take a little bit longer on the transportation side. I would like to start taking quarterly headcounts of our ridership because it ebbs and flows with seasonal sports. Maybe seniors or juniors ride a bus in the winter because mom and dad say, hey, it's not safe for you to drive your vehicle. So we really have an understanding of who we're transporting, how many people we're transporting, and we can adjust our routes accordingly. We've really drilled down on scheduling meetings with transportation on a weekly basis. I know they're tired of meeting with me because we've been doing it since the beginning of the school year, and we have achieved a lot. So like I said, MD and special ed are really growing, so we're making a lot of adjustments there. I like to hear back from our principals. It's a kind of a Six Sigma thing. Our, our qualities defined by our customer. And if our principals are saying one thing, I want to be able to adjust and and deliver. So hearing from them is important. And then culturally, we want to center our, our culture of on-time performance around a common goal. You know, I want to make sure that Peterman knows that we champion on-time performance. I want to make sure they are on board as well. So continually beating that drum, having those meetings and creating a culture of on-time performance, and it's a top-down initiative. So that's going to go to the drivers as well. I see him out there. Yeah, I kid you not. I'm out maybe going to Kroger for a late lunch. I see a yellow bus go by. The first thing I do, can anyone guess? I look at the clock. And I'm like, man, what time is it? Where are they going? What number is it? Are they going to be there on time? Are they going to be in my report in the morning? So it's, 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 it's in here. It's ingrained in me. So that's kind of the culture, that is the culture I want everyone to have within the business office of the transportation is making sure we know what the goal is. And then, like I said earlier, raising the bar after two months of consistently achieving the goal, whatever that is, whatever we decide to move it up to, 87, 88. I want it to be a progressive, achievable, successful goal so we can have a little celebration in there. So that's, that's important as well. You know, why are we doing this? Well, I think our, our families have, have really expressed, you know, consistency. Students have things after, events after work or after school, excuse me, that they have to be to. And if we're, we're dropping them off after five, that's not good for a student's nutrition, mental health, energy. Nobody likes that. So we're really striving to, to, to be consistent for parents and students. You know, teachers don't want to work very late in the night, so we want to make sure we're, we're not causing overtime. We don't want them to stay late. It restores trust and dependability in our transportation department. I take that personally because I worked there for six and a half years. I've been ingrained in the transportation world here for now, going on 11, 12 years. And, and having trust and being able to, when Peterman comes up or Transportation of Pickerington comes up, I want to hear good things. I don't want to hear, well, you know, this bus was late or that bus was late. So it is a personal goal of mine to make this a dependable, trustworthy operation. Question before I move on? Good. All right. All right. This is, oh. Oh, walked. Okay, is this, sorry, Charlie, you added to me. Here we go. All right. So stretch goal for the business office. This speaks stretch in all senses of the word because I will be walking and stretching my muscles, walking through all the buildings. So physically walking each building is a big part of this, probably numerous times. So what is this? This is around operational efficiency. We are a growing district. Unfortunately, our square footage, well, it is. I'm sorry. I shouldn't say that. The K6 square footage isn't growing like our high school and junior high square footage is growing. But we are growing quickly at the K6 level. So we want to develop, and this is what I'm really excited about, is a facility cap, capacity utilization plan. Let me try that again. Facility capacity utilization plan. So what is that? That's us going into the buildings and counting kids in rooms and then saying, okay, if this room, if Mr. Henson, you know, he's a second grade teacher at Heritage Elementary, he's got 26 kids in his room, but the room can handle by contract 30, we're going to say, okay, we're sitting at 26 out of 30. And then we can kind of, or whatever that number is, maybe 30 is not the right number, but that's something the senior leadership team will determine. But we want to know what our absolute max capacity is for each building and where we stand today. Because that allows us to look at boundaries. It allows us to make educated and important decisions on where kids are enrolled programmatically, especially at the special ed curriculum. So we want to be able to say at any given time, this building is at this capacity or this building's at that capacity. It's very important for a growing district. We've not had this before at our fingertips, so that's what we're setting out to develop. And, and I want to reiterate develop because this is, we're creating this as we go. We've not had this. We've actually procured a new software. Not too long ago, you approved FMX. They're going to be a partner in this, so it's a dashboard type electronic dashboard for all of us to use at the senior level. And we're going to develop a SOP. So once we get through the first couple iterations of taking inventory, we're going to create a system. Efficiency, be quick with it, be efficient with it, incorporate the, the principles in that process as well. The second is a capital plan. So we've had a lot of institutional knowledge around here over the years, meaning things are on spreadsheets, things are in our brain, but we've not really had a repository for all of our data when it comes to our capital plan. And things are aging out. I mean, North is the, one of the newer, you know, facilities, believe it or not, and that's coming up on what, 20?
Eight, 20 years.
Yeah, 20 years. We just had some boilers go, you know, Lakeview's roof needed some repair. Things are starting to break down and fail. So these are big ticket items, like a couple hundred thousand dollar items. So we need to be able to say, this unit has this life expectancy, and here we are in that life. How much is this going to cost us in X amount of years? So that allows John to start a little savings plan. Our track, or our new fields, our, our brand new turf fields are going to need to be replaced sometime, and two years ago, they were 1. something million dollars. In 10, 12 years, what are those going to cost? Do we have a savings plan? So those are the things that we're going to work on. And then finally, an asset inventory process mainly geared toward essential educational equipment like desks, chairs, interactive panels, wireless access points in the ceiling. Why? Because we want to be able to flex and grow with our population. So when I go buy something, I know it's an absolute need instead of being able to flex something over from another building because I don't know what's hiding in the custodial closet at Tollgate versus Heritage. So now we're going to have pins on a map telling me where every asset is. And I'll know what each building has. So again, stewardship of the dollar, meticulously tracking and being in the buildings.
Any other questions for Rob?
Yeah, listen, I, I get a little giddy about this stuff. I, I think this is great. It's a long time in coming. What I appreciate about all of this tonight is although we are in a hurricane world of nonsense in public education, and in particular with a high growth, high student enrollment growth environment and a limited facility space reality in Pickerington schools, the fact that we can think beyond the here and now is, is a sign of leadership. As somebody said earlier, leadership starts from the, from the top, and I have to give you, Charlie, and the team a ton of credit for kind of pushing yourselves, pushing us as a district. And in, in the regard of, of your area, all of your areas, but in your area, and even transportation, even though that wasn't a stretch goal, it is a stretch goal. Post COVID, it's been a nightmare. And I hope that our vendor is willing to work with us to achieve the goals that we need for our students. But this asset inventory process, I don't know why I'm so giddy about that. I will say, because I'm just weird like that. I also like policy, so you know, it goes hand in hand. Sidebar comment. Years ago, and it's, it's not your focus, but years ago, just tuck this in the back of your brain, there were other areas of the district that we didn't asset inventory of, namely, it's in the performing arts world. And so just tuck it in the back of your brain. As we grow, what is going on with some of the assets that we have, in particular programming areas like band, orchestra, what have you. So I know that's not your, your primary focus and purpose. But to get a grasp of what we have, and do we still need it in 2025, 2026 in the this is great. This is good stuff. I'm kind of glad we hired you. You really put the fire under these people. I think this is great. Okay, that was, was that necessary?
These folks didn't need any.
I, I know, but listen, this is, this is good because as we continue to grow and change and evolve and have to go to the community for their support, we got a plan. We got a plan. Love it. Okay, I'll be quiet.
No, we certainly appreciate your comments. Well, they were all positive. Who wouldn't appreciate that? My, my first goal is academic excellence. I don't think it's a secret that I really want to introduce to the board as we assemble some, some new folks and get, get our five together that I want a very coherent plan to introduce all-day kindergarten at no charge starting next year. I think that if you were to put a little pie graph together in terms of the amount of time that we've spent on, on anything as a senior leadership team, I think this would rise to the top. I apologize. I realize now that's because that's my goal. So I don't know if that's really fair to, to the rest of you. But I, I believe this is a moral imperative. I, I don't think this should be a question. And we took a, a survey the other night of, of parents. We have 427 responses, and I would say that most are along the lines of almost begging to get this done. We've heard a lot of comment, commentary about the, the struggles that families faced and how they had to really work through a lot of logistical hurdles when they moved in and found out there wasn't all-day kindergarten. We will put together a very coherent presentation, and again, that will be after the election so that we have, we know who our five are. And we look forward to that opportunity. Action steps would be determining costs, which we've already done. We will identify reductions necessary in other areas to offset the cost. We want to identify and resolve transportation concerns, identify research to support. That's both external and internal. We have our information from Tusing, the pilot that Dr. Gillison put into place several years ago. Proposed to the board officially. We'll have sort of a work session about it earlier than that, but there won't be action from the current five because several wouldn't be here. With all due respect, Mr. Lopez and Ms. Neekamp, Mr. Postage, we're certainly hopeful that, that you'll be back and that you'll be a part of that, that group of five that we would present to. Parent meetings would begin as well. We, again, this is Dr. Gillison's MO here. We want to engage parents as much as possible. We also want to form a teacher steering committee. The worst possible mistake we could make is to not do this right. If we do this just to check a box and say, we have all-day kindergarten, it turns into a sort of a debacle on the ground, so to speak. We didn't do anyone any favors. And I've always believed, some of my union friends from previous districts taught me, the people who know the work best are the people doing the work. And so a teacher steering committee is a really important element of this process. And then we would staff kindergarten following our normal staffing process. And we know that we have many kindergarten teachers, but certainly we know that this process will lead to an increase. We also understand that, you know, there is, this is still dependent upon board action. So while it is a goal of mine, and I think it's important to promote it as such, I understand that the Board of Education holds the final say, and we look forward to what I would call making our case that this is a critical development as we grow as a school district. Questions or comments before I move on? The second, the stretch goal is, really comes from, if you've ever read Good to Great by Jim Collins, is one of, one of my favorite leadership authors, but he talked about the hedgehog concept. What are we good at? Focus on those things. Double down on our strengths. And in my estimation, and I'm four or five months in at this point, but we have true strengths in international studies, the arts and but we have true strengths in international studies, the arts and athletics. But I want to make sure that we are not content with our current levels of performance in these areas. I want to make sure that we continue to grow. And in each of those, there are outside councils that we can be a part of. We want to make sure that we're partnering with local agencies to ensure that we are ahead of the curve in terms of what trend research would say. We want our students to understand that the world is far larger than Pickerington. And we would look forward to opportunities for them to present, to attend conferences in these areas, to make sure that they are, in terms of their student peers, seen as statewide leaders in the state of Ohio. I have been continually impressed by the international flavor of our district. We have an incredible amount of student diversity. That is a strength. We have an incredible athletic presence. Our number of state championships outpaces anyone's, especially from a public school standpoint. And certainly we have arts that, from a facility standpoint, from an opportunity standpoint, and from a performance standpoint, outpace our neighbors. But these, again, are strengths that we want to continue to grow. One of the pieces, and, and I'll just sort of, sort of say in both ways, how can we marry those three things to further facility development? And I cite the YMCA, the YMCA has, has approached us. They always have a need. They don't ever have enough space. They don't ever have enough capital to build space. But school districts from time to time do. And at the same time, we don't have a pool. That's a need. We soon, and this is the YMCA's news to share, but we soon are going to be even looking harder for spaces to swim. And so as we grow, and Mr. Weinheimer alluded to our growth, could we partner with YMCA? Because when we build a pool, or if we were to build a pool, 90% of the time, it sits empty. The YMCA has the ability to program. They have membership, they have community outreach that they can help us with. So that's just one example of looking to really immerse the strengths that we already have, but integrate that with our needs as well from a facility standpoint. I also feel that we have the potential to grow a niche in how we use our strengths in athletics from an academic performance standpoint. And so when you think about the YMCA and potentially, again, hypothetically speaking, this is soul fart on the road, but we know our, our junior highs at some point will again need some type of address in terms of additional space. Could we have a sports science institute that we add on to, to, to Lakeview Junior High that also happens to be where our high school pool is? And so now we have students in some type of career tech, sports management program, and they are programming that space. They are learning about sports science. They are learning about the facility management that can come with that type of practical experience. So tho, those are just examples and, and I mean, I, I can sit here and say anything, but the reality is the, the most important success point this year will be those steering committees. Because I think all three of those areas need specific groups of folks that are already, again, on the ground focused on saying, these are strengths, but we can do even better. We can continue to make sure that Pickerington is a school of choice and a statewide presence in terms of all three. Questions or comments for me?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I, I know that went a little bit long, but I thought it was important. It helps us to continue to focus. I meet with our senior leadership team, obviously, once a week as a team, but then individually, once a month, to make sure that we stay on track. And we are excited to be able to present these to you tonight. So thank you for the time.
I just want to share a couple of thoughts, Charlie. One, I can't tell you how much I appreciate the four of you guys sharing that stuff. There's obviously a lot, a lot there. It, it obviously, you know, if you think about it, the, what, 10 of us, if you will, your five, the five of us, you know, we're supposed to constitute the leadership of the district. There's, there's just a lot there. And when we have, when we get to having a new, as you alluded to, when we have a new board and we talk further about some of the goals that, the other goals, Alicia, she only touched on one of them, but there's, there's obviously a couple more. We get to having all those kinds of conversations, thinking about what are some other non-academic key performance indicators that maybe we want to throw into the mix? There's, it's, it's good for, not only for us, but it's good for the community to kind of hear, you know, what are the, what is the, some of the big picture potential way ahead? So I appreciate you taking the time to have your folks do that.
Thank you for the forum.
Next, we're going to move to the consent agenda. And Dr. Smilak, I want to turn that directly over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. First, we have our certified and licensed personnel. And we have resignation, retirement there. Certified Personnel Recommendation, we have one as a replacement in visual art. We have one substitute teacher, license or expansion. This is the non-bachelor's substitute license. We then move into some support personnel. This is item number two. We have a termination. And as we alluded to this earlier, this was more of an abandonment than an actual, some type of punitive measure. We have some contract adjustments. Actually, before that, we have some resignations and retirements. All four of those are actually resignations. And we have several contract adjustments. One, moving from one position to another in the district, which we always love to see that upward acceleration. We then have some support personnel recommendations for the school year. One is a new position, then several are replacements. We also have substitute support service recommendations for this year, which we are thrilled to get. Those are not easy to find. So thank you to Mrs. Richardson and Mr. Coughfeld. Because anytime we can get substitute classified folks, that really helps our schools quite a bit. The third item on the consent agenda is personnel for supplemental contracts and stipends. I think it's really important, again, that I emphasize this tonight because we did have some folks speak to this before. All supplemental and pupil activity contracts are deemed automatically non-renewed. We, we can't, we, we aren't going to say anything about the specific individuals or programs that were identified tonight. As, you know, those processes are far from, from complete. We do appreciate the fact that we had folks come out and passionately speak about our programs and our personnel. But it is important to remember that all supplemental and pupil activity contracts are automatically non-renewed at the end of the school year. That said, we have a supplemental contract precision. And we have a supplemental contract and stipal, stipend recommendations. There's a long list there. We have several stipends as well. We then are approving several volunteer coaches or advisors. Thank you very much to those folks willing to give up their time to volunteer for our, for our students. We have several ticket sellers and tournament workers. We have some game workers. Then we have some stage managers, specific to Pickerington North. We appreciate that as well. Definitely an underrated aspect of what we do. Nobody appreciates the stage manager until there isn't one. And good, good luck finding those lights, principal. I've been on the receiving end of that. It's, uh, it's not fun. Where, where's the microphone? Subject four on the consent agenda is other. This is for early graduation. Congratulations to those students who are ready to receive their diplomas ahead of what they would have normally been scheduled to do. And item number five on the consent agenda is the approval of such, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, wait, hurry, wait. Who first did it? JD?
JD.
Sorry.
I'm not very good.
You want to call the roll, please?
Yep. JD, Postage, Mr. Postage?
Yes.
Sorry, you're, just fire me.
No, you're fine.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
And myself, I am a yes.
That takes us to discussion action items. There are a multitude of policies for second reading. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Kathy, can you call the roll, please?
Oh, no, I'm still hung up on the last one. Okay. Who was the first on this?
Mark and JD.
Okay, you guys are just going to trade off tonight, aren't you? All right. Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Postage?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Myself, I am a yes. And there we go.
Perfect. Next, we have a motion, or looking for a motion in a second, to approve the settlement agreement regarding fiber damage. It was as a result of some construction.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we just have a explanation?
I'll be quick. So this is a first for the district because fiber's not that old. We haven't, you know, had it very long. But our fiber is buried in the right of way, as is everybody else's. And if a outside entity wants to work in the right of way, they call Oops. It's O U P S. That is a, a, a marking, a utility marking service. So we are in the public utility right of way, so we pay for that service whenever someone calls. A Seals Construction, which is named in the resolution, hit one of our lines, which was properly marked. So what did they do? They, they took a big shovel off of a backhoe and pulled up our conduit, stretched our conduit, but didn't break the fiber. So if you've ever seen those big spools out by the side of the road and they have the big orange tubes on them, that's called conduit. And there's smaller tubes that go inside of that. And then there's fiber that goes inside of that. And that's what our data runs through. So they pulled that up, stretched it, but didn't break it. So being the first time, we had to navigate Seals Construction, their insurance company, our insurance company, and the attorneys. So here we are today. We're going to, I'm asking for the board to accept 150,000 approximate dollars to repair it. And then also have Guttenkopf do the repair. So we're going to recommend to accept that money. And then just a little bit further south on that page, the amount Guttenkopf can, can do to repair it. I will say fiber's on a back order thanks to Google. But it's working in good order right now, so it will be repaired when we get the fiber.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Postage?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
And myself, I am a yes. Motion passes.
And that takes us to section F, discussion only. This is our public hearing for Title I and Special Education Funds. Does anybody have any discussion points or anything regarding that? No. So we will move on, consider the meeting held. And we will go to section G, information only. We have a few people pursuing their degrees. And so we wish them the best of luck in the future in that pursuit. Next, we have camp. And Pickerington High School North is hosting a winter cheer camp on December 7th. That's at the PHSN Fieldhouse for grades one through six. And that is being sponsored by the PNABC Spirit Club. And that will take us back to Dr. Smilak for his financial update.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. I just wanted to paint some context because I think it's, it's always important when we talk about school funding. We're not on the ballot in November, but we may, we may be in the future. And it's important to help our community understand that we certainly aren't alone in our continued endeavor of asking our folks, our taxpayers, to up the ante for us, to provide more support so that we can continue to operate with a sense of excellence for our students. And so today, I wanted to highlight the neighboring communities that are on the ballot. As again, I think it's important to just illustrate how everybody takes their turn. When the state said that we had a fair funding act and this is going to reduce the amount of times that, you know, school districts are going to come back. First of all, they haven't funded that to the degree that they said. But secondly, it was still largely dependent upon property taxes. And no one, no one up here, no one on any type of campaign committee, no one i- in the schools themselves, ever wants to actually have to ask people to pay more money. That's not an exciting part of what we are tasked with doing on a year to year or cyclical basis. But the number of schools that I'm going to read to you in the, in the near future here illustrates the fact that this is not a Pickerington issue. This is not a Columbus City issue. This is, this is a universal state issue. So you're going to hear, just in our area, just school districts that people will be familiar with, seven districts on the ballot this November. Olin TNG is asking for a $235 million bond issue for new construction. They, like us, are, are growing. That's a 1.77 mil bond issue. Westerville, now, this is something to follow. Because I think we all need to widen our perspective on what we should consider in terms of an ask. This is a 0.75% earned income tax, which will actually generate $24.3 million a year for the commu, for the Westerville schools. So I, I know that this is not the purpose of tonight's meeting. We will have Baker Tilly, who are far more versed in, in how to do these things. But boy, when I see 0.75% earned income tax earning $24.3 million per year, I know that opened my eyes wider.
Yeah, when is Baker Tilly coming to town?
November 16th, I believe. It's not at a board meeting, remember, it's a special, special meeting that we're, we're looking at. So we have several.
The 10th is the next regular meeting, so the 16th sounds right.
16th is a Sunday, so it's not?
No, it's not going to be. So Wednesday, Wed, Wed, yeah, you're right. Wednesday, Wednesday, the 12th is for, for board folks to talk about communication structures and goal setting.
But that says Baker Tilly.
No, the, the, the 12th is, is just internal. The 19th will be Baker Tilly. That's correct. It'd really throw off my cadence. I don't, I don't even know what number I'm on. I'm kidding. Delaware City is next, 2.85 mils. Permanent Improvement. Jonathan Alder is next at a 5.12 mil bond issue, which is an awful lot of construction, but we'd imagine they're growing quickly. Jefferson Local is looking for a renewal of 1% earned income tax. Southwest Licking is a 3.48 mil bond issue. And then Walnut Township, right under the deadline, is looking at a 1.4 mil emergency operating levy. Now, again, the state of Ohio has taken away the ability to look for an emergency operating levy, but that is a 10-year issue that they will be looking at.
Let me ask you a question about that emergency levy. I'm going to interrupt your cadence again. The state has said those are no longer an option. But if one passes before the, it's on the deadline, December 31st?
They wouldn't be able to ask for it after this.
But they can keep it in place for 10 years?
Correct.
Okay.
So actually, I'm sorry, you did throw me off. I wasn't even ready to wrap up. Again, ju, just trying to emphasize tonight that, you know, we're, we're really, all public school systems in the state of Ohio are going through similar processes. We will try to be as smart and strategic and selective as possible as we go through the process. But we're not, we're not alone in trying to turn to our community to say, we need some more.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Next is section H, comments or questions? Any public comments or questions about anything that was on the agenda this evening? Any board member comments or questions about anything that was on the agenda this evening?
Yeah, I was just curious how we're going to handle the community members who came to speak to us about their concern regarding the central athletic program. The programs, the two programs.
No, I appreciate the question. You know, it's sort of deferred to Mr. Lopez as, as they were here. But we certainly appreciate that, that folks took that much time and, and, you know, were very, very articulate. The one woman who somehow got it in under three minutes, I mean, that was impressive. She, she needed to take, take a break there, take a breath. I was actually texting with Mr. Parker during the presentation and him and I'll develop a strategy. I mean, part of, part of what we have to ensure, and I certainly don't know all the ins and outs at this point, but we have to make sure that people are feeling heard and.
Sure. And, and that was my point, not like the specific, what are we going to do? Just the connecting back with
Yep.
the individuals. Okay.
Okay. With that, we will entertain a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Kathy, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Postage?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well.
All right, thank you, everyone. We will be back in two weeks.
I don't ever want to do this again.
I don't have any idea.